I'm go, I'm ready to go ahead and start the meeting. Good morning.
I'm sorry, I do have Eagle Brown just landed in the Zoom room.
Thank you, Jake.
No problem. Good morning, Eagle Brown. I have a, an announcement to make once the meeting has been called to order.
Go ahead and call the May 20, 27, 20, 21 Planning Commission being to order.
All right, and so we had an issue with the, the one-click Zoom link that was posted to the agenda. There was a typo in that link. The typo has been corrected. So any individuals that might be experiencing any issues trying to use the one-click link, if you just refresh that page, you should get the corrected link. There is also information a little below containing the meeting ID and password that can also be used to access this Zoom meeting. Thank you.
Can we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes from the May 13th meeting and its approval.
Mr. Chair. I move, I move that the commission approve the minutes from our May 13, 2021 meeting.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
If we have any systems input, we'll take that at this time.
Mr. Chair, there is no one here in the chambers that wishes to speak.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't see any hands raised in the Zoom room. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand via Zoom. You could do so by clicking on Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen or dialing *9 if you've called in via phone.
Okay, are we ready for our first item? So this is a major use permit, UP 20-85. The applicant owner, Cushman and Big, Bigfield Enterprises, Inc., proposing project. Application is applying for one Type 6 Non-Volatile Cannabis Manufacturing License and one Type 11 Cannabis Distributor License to occur with an existing 11,000 square foot building. Location 11270 Clayton Creek Road, Lower Lake, California, 95457. APN 049-300-15. Environmental evaluation categorical exemption CE 21-12.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Catherine Shafers, Assistant Planner. Today I have before you a categorical exemption, as was just explained. I am going to be going through the staff report, so if you'd like to follow along. I don't have a presentation today, but for my next presentation, I will make sure that that does happen. Okay, so Cushman and Bigfield Enterprises Incorporated is the applicant. They're requesting a Type 6 Non-Volatile Cannabis Manufacturing License, which involves using non-volatile solvents or no solvents as defined by the Business and Professions Code, Section 40100, and then a Type 11 Cannabis Distributor License. That's the procurement, sale, and transport of cannabis and cannabis products between entities licensed pursuant to California Code.
Just a moment, just a moment. We're going to try and make it to where it's a little bit louder for everyone to hear.
Thank you. All right, so this is a categorical exemption because it is within an existing building. Is that feedback okay? All right. Okay. Okay, so the existing building is located at 11270 Clayton Creek Road in Lower Lake. It's approximately 11,000 square feet and 2.5 stories tall. The uses are proposed as following. 2,865 square feet of processing space, which will include trimming and storing. 2,085 square feet for distribution activities, including a loading and unloading area and storage. And then 1,697 square feet dedicated to offices. All right, at the site are already existing parking spaces, including 15 paved parking spaces, currently occupying the front of the building. While another 30 are proposed to be constructed in the back of the property. One ADA stall is proposed for the front of the building. Water will be supplied by an existing onsite well, and all activities will use the existing infrastructure, including parking and restrooms. No products are going to be displayed for this project. There is also no external signage that is advertising cannabis product. The hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday between 8:00 and 6:00 p.m. And then Monday through Sunday between 12:00 and 5:00 p.m. Or sorry, deliveries and pickups are Monday through Sunday between 12:00 and 5:00. And core business hours are Monday through Sunday between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. All right, the facility will have containers for recycling within the trash storage areas. No additional accessory structures or storage containers are being proposed for this project, so no additional building or construction. Landscaping includes bushes along the front or the west of the building, defining the entrance to the facility and providing a break from the project property and the public roadway and neighboring facilities. To the north and the south and loading areas also contain vegetative landscape screening. The rear of the property to the east does not currently have screened landscaping, but is enclosed by a six-foot-tall fence topped with barbed wire. The existing facility has two separate loading platforms at the back door, one being a below-grade ramp mostly over six feet deep. The other platform is the surface parking lot pavement, which extends to the back door. The project site is completely enclosed by the six-foot-tall fence topped with barbed wire. And a Knox box is currently located on the front electrically-controlled gate. Okay, security systems. Live feeds of all the interior and exterior areas were observed at the time of the site visit. Commercial-grade locks enclose all entrances. The applicant is proposing to hire security personnel as well as utilizing login sheets. All authorized personnel, suppliers, and visitors are proposed to sign in and out. Lockers were already observed on the site for employee valuables. The proposed manufacturing and distribution will require approximately four full-time employees. Employees may vary depending on the season. The project contains 15 pre-existing parking spaces. Deliveries will be based on the Lake County zoning ordinance restricted times for deliveries, which we've already stated. Hazardous chemicals or materials are not proposed to be stored onsite or used for manufacturing activities. All solid waste is proposed to be stored in bins with secure fitting lids until being disposed of at a Lake County Integrated Waste Management Facility at least once per week. So a little bit about the project parcel. It's about 1.9 assessed acres. The zoning is service commercial, and the general plan is also service commercial. This project is not within a special flood hazard area. Let's see, it's also not within a community growth boundary. The area is mostly service commercial to the north and the south. To the east is rural residential, and to the west is more service commercial with some agricultural zoning. It's a very flat parcel, so when we went out there, we didn't observe any hills or rolling. So we have a flat parcel. There's public sewer. And we didn't observe any seasonal creeks in the project parcel either. Okay, so the general plan designation for the subject site is service commercial, as was mentioned before. This category provides areas suitable for heavier commercial uses within developed areas. Typical uses that would be permitted within appropriate buffer distances include automotive-related heavy equipment sales and services, building maintenance services, construction sales and services, and warehousing. The applicant is proposing cannabis manufacturing, packaging, and distribution. These are allowed within the planned development, commercial zoning, and industrial general plan. The project is located appropriately and not within a community growth boundary. For land use, coming off of the general plan, goal LU1, land use 1, is to encourage the overall economic and social growth of the county while maintaining its quality of life standards. Subpolicy 1.3 is to prevent incompatible uses. The county shall prevent the intrusion of new incompatible uses into the existing community areas. This project is within service commercial, and it is proposing activities that are consistent with the use in the area. Goal LU2 is to clearly differentiate between areas within Lake County appropriate for higher-intensity urban services and land uses from areas where rural or resource use should be emphasized. Subpolicy 2.4 is the agricultural residential buffer. The county shall require adequate setbacks between agricultural and non-agricultural uses. So in reference to the Lake County's zoning ordinance, Article 27, subsection AAA, the county requires a minimum 70-foot setback from all property lines of the subject property and a minimum of 140-foot setback from any off-site residences. The nearest off-site residence is located more than 1,000 feet from the project site, so the project will meet these setback requirements. Goal LU6 is to maintain a healthy and diverse local economy that meets and presents future employment, shopping, recreational, and service needs of Lake County residents. Subpolicy 6.1. The county shall actively promote the development of a diversified economic base. So this proposed operation would create diversity within the local economy and create future employment opportunities for local residents. According to the applicant's application, there is a total of four employees proposed, but the number of employees can increase or decrease depending on the stage of the processing and manufacturing season. Okay, Lower Lake area conformance. The plan does not contain policies specific to the processing and manufacturing of cannabis, but contains the following policies relating to the objective of orderly growth and development shall be encouraged within the Lower Lake area by focusing higher-intensity development within the community of Lower Lake. So Section 5.1A1, the Lower Lake land use plan should recognize existing development patterns and logically provide for future development in the area. And 5.1A2, the focus of new development in the planning area should be within the community of Lower Lake and contiguous to existing development and available public services. So the applicant is proposing manufacturing, processing, and distribution. These are allowable uses within the service commercial zoning and service commercial general plan. It is located appropriately and not within a community growth boundary. The proposed project would allow existing and permitted cultivators to process and manufacture their cannabis plants within the county, which in turn would lead to a boost in economic development and reduce travel distances for cultivators. Okay, zoning ordinance conformance. Article 20, the planned development commercial. The cannabis processor, manufacturing, and distributor licenses are permitted in the C3 Service Commercial Zoning District upon issuance of a major use permit pursuant to Article 27, Section 27.11, Table B of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance. Article 27 Use Permits. The purpose of Article 27 is for those uses possessing characteristics of unique and special form as to make their use acceptable in one or more districts upon issuance of zoning permits, minor or major use permits, in addition to any required building, grading, and/or health permits. Okay, development standards. Most of this is taken from Section AU, which governs most of the cannabis manufacturing in the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, with mentions to AV and AX. So development standards. The parcel where the processor activity is located shall front and have direct access to a paved state or county-maintained road. In some of the agency comments for this project, it was emphasized that maintaining and having a paved road to this project was important and should be done. It is already existing, so that project does meet those requirements. All processor activities shall occur within the enclosed building. When we went to the site visit, it was observed that all manufacturing activities would be in the enclosed building and not spill out into the parking lot. So there are specific areas for the manufacturing in the building. All right. Trying to highlight some of these other things here. A lot of this is standard. So the building where the processor activities are conducted shall be equipped with filtration systems. This was a big one. When we went on to the site visit, there was a, once again, fully functioning air filtration system that was already within the building. And any odors that might arise from the manufacturing of cannabis here would seem to be mitigated by that technology. All right, environmental review. So this is a categorical exemption. When I reviewed this project, it does fall into the existing facilities. This class consists of the operation, repair, maintenance, permitting, leasing, licensing, or minor alteration of existing public or private structures, facilities, mechanical equipment, or topological features involving negligible or no expansion of existing or formal use. So this project does not propose to expand the building. All activities are contained within existing structures. And at this point, Commissioners, I'm not sure if I read the findings of approval. Then I think that wraps up my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chair. I do have one odd question. If, the expected number of employees is four, maybe more, at peak times of the season, why are 45 parking spaces proposed?
So there's a current number of about 15.
Right.
But depending on the expansion of the facility, it could be up to 40. The lot itself can hold up to that many spaces. So when it says up to, it's because that's what the lot has as far as availability. So there wasn't a, the plan, a plan that I was aware of of expansion to specifically accommodate 45 beyond seasonal fluctuations.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
The only question I have is in regards to the additional 30 parking spaces and how those are going to be constructed. On page nine of the staff report, it says no exterior construction or grading is proposed for the completion of this project. And so in, in terms of construction of new, of the new 30 spaces, how is that going to happen without any grading or?
So at this time, the project is not proposing grading activities, but in the conditions of approval, there are mitigation measures should anything occur. So if you, like, I can peek through this a moment and point out the spaces.
And would that be considered a minor alteration?
Would it be considered a minor alteration?
Yeah.
That's a good question, I'm not sure. So let me take a look at my conditions here and see what we have.
Catherine, I don't have my, I don't have the conditions in front of me. Do you have any conditions in there that says for any work that they have to get any permits?
I believe I put that in there, so I'm just trying to locate it quickly. But I will have an answer for you, 30 seconds. All right, so this is going to be condition three on page one. Prior to operation or construction, the applicant shall obtain permits from all necessary federal, state, and local agencies, including ourselves, for the construction or development of any new infrastructure. So in case any of that does happen, they will have to go through us to get grading, building permits, if there is anything requested. If it is something that involves an environmental analysis, for example, if they're going to be grading more than what is allotted, that would require a new environmental analysis. So that's, that is true.
Okay, thank you. If we have no questions, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public, public comment.
If anybody in chambers would like to speak on this agenda item, you're welcome to approach the podium. There's no one here in the chambers, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Let's close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I live in Hidden Valley Lake and drove past this location just this morning. I think it's just the right kind of place for this kind of activity. There's an existing building. Unless you know where to look, you sort of don't even see it as you drive past. And of course, if my colleagues have any questions or comments, otherwise I'm prepared to offer a motion.
I'll just go ahead and echo what Commissioner Hess said. The location of, of this project is ideal. I think it'll be very beneficial for not only the South County, but any other traffic that goes through. It's, it's located very well. That's all I have to say.
I don't see any issues with this project whatsoever, so I guess I'll be waiting on Commissioner Hess.
Mr. Chair. I move that the Planning Commission find that the categorical exemption CE 21-12, applied for by High Grade Solutions on property located at 11270 Clayton Creek Road, Lower Lake, California, and further described as APN 049-300-15, will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore a categorical exemption shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 1, 2021.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Mr. Chair. I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 20-85, applied for by High Grade Solutions on property located at 11270 Clayton Creek Road, Lower Lake, California, and further described as APN 049-300-15, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Article 27, Section AU, AV, and AX of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and the major use permit be granted, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated April 1, 2021.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
If you'd like to note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 a.m. on before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Okay, we'll move to our 910 item. Just a quick question for council. If we're requesting this item be continued, do I need to read the text?
Mr. Chair, are you asking if you need to read the text of the item to bring it to the floor? Yes, because the item is being heard today, and you're being, your commission is being requested. There is a request for continuance, and so you're making a decision as to whether or not to continue.
So our 910 item, hoping here to consider major use permit, UP 19-32. The applicant, Patrick Smythe, owner of Patrick Smythe, proposed project applicant is applying for a total of 41,796 square feet of canopy, 32,076 square feet outdoor cultivation, and 9,720 square feet mixed-lake cultivation area with a total of 44,121 square feet of cultivation area. Facilities including three 30 by 108 greenhouses, and one 1,008-square-foot processing facility, one 525-square-foot, one 1,225-square-foot concrete pad to hold, to hold nine 1,500-gallon water storage tanks, and three 3,500-gallon water storage tanks. Location 19697 and 19713 East Road, Lower Lake, California, APNs 012-049-17 and 012-049-18. Environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration, IS 19-50.
Is there anyone giving a, a staff report on this, or? Good morning.
Morning.
If you'd like to get in the hot seat?
Why not?
Thank you.
It's all good. My name's Mike Taylor, and I'm Assistant Planner. And yes, this is a request for a continuation for UP 1932 and IS 1950 for Patrick Smythe. So we're requesting a continuation due to inadvertent oversight on the processing. There are some, a couple items we want to address prior to the PC hearing, and that would be a well-information and also addressing comments from council.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, actually, this, this will go back to you. Do you have a, a said date in mind for your?
June 10th.
June 10th?
Yes.
Okay. I can go ahead and, if everyone is in agreement to go ahead and continue this item, I can make a motion. I move that this item, do, do I need to read the whole entire thing? I'm sorry.
You can read it like we discussed, with just the pertinent, pertinent agenda item information and that you're moving to continue to the next scheduled regular meeting of the Planning Commission on June 10th.
Thank you. In regards to, oh, I move that the, in regards to major use permit UP 19-32, applicant Patrick Smythe. Will, Nicole, this is not, I apologize, it's not, it's not written down correctly to read it. Commissioner Hess, would you mind doing a continuation for us, please?
I move that the Planning Commission continue this agenda item on major use permit UP 19-32. Applicant owner, Patrick Smythe. Project in, on East Road in Lower Lake, California, be continued. Project in, on East Road in Lower Lake, California be continued to the next planning commission hearing on June ten, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second.
You're in a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to our nine-fifteen item, public hearing to consider rezone, RZ twenty-dash-zero-two and general plan amendment, GPAP twenty-zero-two. The applicant owner Greg Hanson proposed project applicant is requesting a split rezone approximately plus or minus seven acres from A agriculture to A M two agricultural heavy industry and general plan amendment from A agriculture to A I agriculture industry of undeveloped land on two parcels under one legal lot, location three-five-five-five and three-four-four-five Big Valley Road, Kelseyville, California. Nine-five-four-five-one APN zero-zero-eight, zero-three-eight-dash-one-seven and zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-three-eight-dash-four-four. Environmental evaluation, negative declaration IS twenty-dash-ninety-one.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I have a slide prepared, a short one now. So this one is for, for a GPAP twenty-dash-oh-two and rezone twenty-dash-oh-two for, and applicant is Greg Hanson. The applicant is requesting a rezone from an agricultural to an M two heavy industrial and a general plan amendment from agricultural to industrial of approximately seven acres of undeveloped land for the assessed parcel number zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-three-eight-dash-one-seven and zero-zero-eight, zero-three-eight-dash-four-four. And it is one legal lot. The project parcel is access from an existing unimproved roadway off of Big Valley Road, a county maintained road. Let's see. Okay, so for the current general plan, the project is located within the Kelseyville area plan and is designated as agriculture in the Lake County general plan. The general plan contains policies related to agricultural and the proposed land use designated of industrial in regards to developments such as land use goal for and its associated policies. That's in the staff report. That would be applicable to future development within the industrial. Industrial general, general plan designation along Big Valley Road would allow and or encourage the development of commercial centers within community growth boundary. The rezone and general plan amendment would allow the development of commercial for crops within our county or allowable use within the zoning destination that fits the needs of the county. The proposed general plan is consistent with the surrounding for crops and various light to heavy industrials, commercial use. To date, the county processed two general plan amendment, making this a third if approved. In the pink portion, that is where the, the community growth boundary is located. The proposed rezone is not within the community growth boundary. The applicant seeks to rezone approximately, yeah, seven undevelop, um, seven acres undeveloped portion to a heavy industrial, that's an M two, to allow the future economic development that is consistent along Big Valley Road. The remaining acreage of the project parcel will remain designated as ag. Let's see. Is, okay. Who's messing with the computer?
Sorry, the screen was not shared. I wanted to do that real quick, didn't mean to interrupt. You can take control again, I'm sorry.
Okay. So to continue, the, the rezone with the general plan designation from ag to industrial would not only extend the existing M two along Big Valley Road, but it would allow economic development of commercial use in suitable area that would help protect the economic viability of downtown Kelseyville, including being consistent with the Kelseyville area plan. So an environmental evaluation was completed and circulated for review in compliance with CECO and resulted in no mitigation necessary due to no development proposed per applicant. The applicant meets all required findings in the approval of, for the general plan amendment rezone findings listed in the staff report. Staff recommends the planning commission to adopt the negative declaration based on the initial study with the following findings in the staff report and recommends to the board of supervisor to approve the general plan amendment with the following findings in the staff report. Okay, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, just one minor edit in terms of the staff report on page six in the response. It's, there's a reference to the twenty-twenty calendar year, which I think should be twenty-twenty-one, just for the record, so we get that.
Mr. Chair, I do not have any comments until possibly after the public.
Thank you.
No comments.
Okay, let's open this up to public comment.
Anybody in the chambers wish to speak on behalf of either the applicant or public comment? Nobody in here. Jake, anyone in the Zoom room?
Yes, we do have one raised hand in the Zoom room. I have a hand raised from Mark Borgasani. Probably ruined that last name. I have given you permission to speak and have asked you to unmute.
Okay.
Uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, you can hear you. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Uh, my name is Mark Borgasani. I'm from Kelseyville.
Thank you. You may continue.
Okay, initially, when I wrote my letter, I did submit a letter on this issue. I only had the MND to base some of my comments on. But after receiving the staff report, I have a few, a few more comments to make. As far as the, the split zone originally, when the MND came out, it talked about A-dash-M two zoning. And I assuming that just has something to do with the split zoning. I couldn't find anything on A-dash-M two. And reading the staff report, it looks like they clarified it as just M two zoning is what they're going for to straight industrial. So I think I answered my question on that one. It was a little unclear on how he was making this seven acre parcel, if it was going to be the two-point-three acre parcel that got expanded, or if it was going to be another seven acre parcel split off of the larger parcel to create three total pieces. That was a little unclear. So touching on a couple things here on the, on page five of the project analysis, staff uses policy LU four-point-four as a basis to, I guess justify the area plan and the general plan amendment. You know, and it says the county shall encourage the development of commercial centers within community growth boundaries. This project is not within the boundary, so therefore that really doesn't apply. So the next one, LU four-point-five wouldn't really apply either because the project doesn't sit in the boundary. In the response on page six for that section, it addresses about the middle of the paragraph, it says it would, it would allow and or encourage the development of commercial centers within community growth boundaries. Again, it's not within the boundary, you know, and that's a big deal. It was a big deal, you know, when I did my project some time ago, I was within the boundaries and that's what makes my project, you know, a lot different from what I did back then as opposed to what's being proposed now. You know, when they talk about commercial centers, you know, M two does not allow for that. It does not allow for eating and drinking, retail sales, or, you know, supermarkets of that nature. The response to the land use, five-point-one, in that response, staff again clearly states, it says a corridor in Kelseyville and located within the community growth boundaries, which it is not. And there was another section where, page seven, where was that at? Where they refer to the, oh, yeah, in that same response, it says, uh, community growth boundaries in percent, in parentheses, it says, located on the outer edge. Well, there is no really outer edge. You're either in or you're out of the boundary. You know, there's seven to eight miles of boundary for the community growth boundary in Kelseyville.
I'm so sorry, Mark. We've had our three-minute timeline. Thank you so much for your comments.
Seriously.
Mark, if you had just a couple more seconds to wrap up or whatever, please feel free.
Yeah, it's, it won't be very much, Commissioner Hess. So, you know, on that five-point-one, again, they state, you know, you know, on the outer edge, there is no outer edge. You're either in or you're out. Like I said, there's, you know, seven to eight miles of community growth boundary bordering Kelseyville. So what does that say for all those parcels that go around the community that are bordering the community growth boundary? You know, it's just, it's not consistent with the area plan or the general plan because it's not in the community growth boundary. That's really, you know, a big deal in this, in this situation. There was no plan of development. There's no scope of the project. There's no description of how the site's going to look. There's no explanation of intended uses. You know, I went through all this and I know, I know what it's like and I know they're not putting all this together because they probably don't want to spend the money to do a proposal. They want to see if they can get a rezone first before they do a bunch of work. And I get that, but, you know, if, if you're going to change the general plan, people have to know what's going on. And we have to be able to look at the project as the public, because this is a big deal. Ag, ag to anything is a big deal. It was fifteen years ago when those chambers of yours were full for multiple meetings through the planning commission, board of supervisors, and LAFCO. Almost three years of it to do what he's trying to do with just one piece of paper. So that's it. I appreciate the, at the extra time, Commissioner Hess and, and all of you. Thank you.
Any other comments in the Zoom room?
I don't.
Yes, yes, we do have another hand raised from Brenna Sullivan. Brenna, it looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Good morning, commissioners. Brenna Sullivan with the Lake County Farm Bureau.
Thank you.
Good morning, Brenna.
Good morning. So Mr. Borgasani covered some of our concerns regarding the community growth boundaries. So in the interest of time, I don't want to review those. But one area of concern is that zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-three-eight-dash-zero-four-four is a forty-acre parcel that is zoned ag. And in this project proposal, the proposal is seven acres rezone to industrial, including parcel zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-three-eight-dash-one-seven, which is the two-acre parcel or two-point-three-eight acre parcel. So presumably, the applicant is proposing to split up that forty-acre parcel to create the seven acres. Additionally, that forty-acre parcel has agriculture on it, is surrounded by agriculture on nearly all sides of the parcel except for the side of budding Big Valley Road. So Lake County Farm Bureau would be opposed to this rezone from essentially a forty-acre parcel of agriculture to industrial. It wasn't, it wasn't, maybe I missed in the application whether that forty-acre parcel is, is, is going to apply for a parcel adjustment. That wasn't clear. If we could get some clarification on that as well. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Zoom room?
That is the last hand that I have raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, let's bring it back to the chambers. Is there any public comment from the chambers?
Yes, I do have a hand raised.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Hi there. My name is Brian Hanson. I'm a council resident, the son of the applicant Greg Hanson. Good morning, everyone. I've listened to the, the comments. While I agree with some of them, I, I also disagree. There was a first on this, whether it's within or and or in the growth boundary. It didn't, the Lake County Ag Commission recently had to make restrictions that were similar to cannabis within or on the community growth boundary. During a hemp experiment during twenty-nineteen during, on this parcel, it was pretty clear that this, that probably wasn't the correct use for that. We were not opposed to that, but restrictions on the community growth boundaries would not allow a federally traded ag commodity such as hemp to be grown on an ag parcel. So I would, I would think that that would be an issue I'd like to discuss with the Farm Bureau. While I agree that with Mr. Borgasani that his project has been phenomenal. As a Kelseyville community, we, we respect him and his business. But I also know that he brought a PDC, a plant commercial, plant development, commercial approach to his project. He had engineered plans. He had LAFCO. He had everything. And it's a tremendous undertaking, which, you know, is, is not to be downplayed. That being said, this is not PDC, so this is simply the first step in a rezone for property that, and I quote, "for the ag commissioner's office was a casualty of war." Their, their words, not ours. So I would ask, what, what can we do with this property then? If we, if we can't do the rezone, if we can't grow an ag product within ag zoning, it leaves, leaves us to wonder what to do. I had a few other bullet points. There's already an approved just south of this location. There's already an approved five-thousand-square-foot ag-related business, commercial building, approved just a couple of years ago that will be getting underway here shortly. The granite, granite yard across the street was in production for years and years. I know there was someone who commented on the legal, about worries about the road. Eighteen-wheelers have been coming and going down this road for decades. And this also aligned with previous planning directors, Coell and Masorelli, that saw the growth of Kelseyville going towards the north. The south is basically, expansion's not going to go that way. It's out of, it's basically out of space on South Main Street. This is a major thoroughfare down to the county's park where there's softball and bass tournaments. I think it's undervalued, the, the, the amount of traffic that comes through this corridor. The county also had the foresight to put public works all the way past this project to the corner for fire hydrants. It's already, it's already in and under. So it seems that this was imminent and it's, and it's coming. Again, I do respect the comments of Brenna and Mark, though. Brenna and Mark though. And that's all I have to add right now.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments in the chambers?
Um, I, I will chime in. Um, as a long-term Kelseyville resident, I, I feel that there's only a certain amount of growth that Kelseyville can do in the, um, the space provided, the zoning provided. I, I would like to see something go and have a usable, um, a good land use for this piece of land just because of, it's just sitting there. Um, I, I do respect the, the agricultural surrounding area, but if it's only going to be seven acres of change development, um, I feel like it's something we could, we should consider.
Do we have any other public comment in the chambers?
No. Not, not in chambers, not from the public.
Okay, let's close public comment and then we'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission. Do we have any other comments from the commission or questions for staff?
So I do have a comment. Um, was, um, as I could see from here, um, from Google Maps that it's, uh, was there orchards there? Or what kind of, uh, are the pears or what's the original use of the property?
I want to say there is pears in the area. There's vineyards in the area and walnuts as well. And then on the other side of the street is where the old granite yard is. And I do believe, uh, Lake County Road Department is on the other side of the road as well.
So my question then would be, what is the, the seven acres that are proposed? Was that cleared off of, um, existing, um, like agriculture that was there before or it was already?
I think, I think what he's asking is how long ago, because right now it is all, it's all just disc. It's, it's flat. So the previous use I do believe was an orchard. I'm not sure what kind of.
Yeah, when I went on, on the site visit, um, there was nothing there.
And before that there was? That's kind of like, was it always, the whole thing was covered up or it was cleaned up recently?
This was, so I went, this was not my project. Um, it was acquired. I, I went on a site visit with the previous planner last year and it, it, it was.
It was cleared.
It was nothing. Yeah, it was cleared.
Um, it possibly, if the applicant can clarify how long the land has been cleared.
And, and was this a, you said a hemp operation at one point or not?
Yeah, correct. It was a hemp experiment.
One, one second, we're going to turn on your mic and please be sure to state your first and last name.
Uh, Brian Hanson again commenting for the applicant. Uh, correct. Uh, this was a Bosque pear tree orchard two decades ago. That was cleared. Um, it's been cleared for, like I said, approximately 20 years. There was a hemp experiment, I would say, in 2019, uh, tested there that failed, um, but was also informed afterwards that that would no longer be a possibility per, um, Ag Commission standards on setbacks.
So then with the rezoning, um, like, uh, the other person stated earlier within the comments, but what are the uses for? What do you guys have in mind of doing with the property or just the rezoning is just, you know, there has to be some sort of a idea that I mean, just to paint a picture.
Correct. Um, the, in the M two use as a, as a plethora of, of possibilities there, um, outlined, which we haven't identified yet exactly. We, we're open to suggestions and, uh, it's a constant, um, conversation. But no, we haven't exact, we haven't identified, which is again, uh, makes us not a PDC, um, planned, uh, planned development commercial. It's simply the first step in the, in the rezone process.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I, I would look to the other commissioners to kind of feel out what they are thinking here. I understand that it is not in the community growth boundary, but if it's not in the community growth boundary and someone has bought a piece of property, has owned it in a family, it sounds for at least two generations and they would like to do something with it, I am more inclined to say that it's not, um, I don't feel like I have any rights to make a decision on what they do with their property. We're allowed to do three rezones until this is the third. I thought it was the second. But, um, to me, uh, that sounds like something I could go behind, even though I do really want to, uh, respect the ag community here and make sure that I'm not, um, taking away from, uh, them and the valuable farmland. But again, this seems like it is not someone who came in from out of the area and has all of a sudden decided to make some severe changes. And then that, I think I'd feel a little differently. So that's kind of where I'm going with this. Is this the third rezone? Is that correct?
If you're, Commissioners, if you're referencing the number of general plan amendments that a commission, that the county can do within a year, it's four. This is, my understanding is number two for this year. Um, and that will, that will be triggered when the decision maker, the final decision maker makes a decision. So that'll be, uh, the board.
Okay, thank you.
And your commission does actually regulate the uses of land for people regardless of how long they've actually, they've actually had family ownership of that particular piece of property.
Yes, I, I realize that we have the final authority, but again, that would factor into my decision making. Thank you.
I do have a question for the applicant. Mr. Hanson, have you, are you saying that you've ruled out any agricultural use of that seven acres? There's not going to be another hemp experiment?
No, it's, it's not, it's not restricted at this point. Again, Brian Hanson for the, for the applicant. Yeah, at this point, there, there'll be no further ag development in this area.
Right. On page five of the staff report, it mentions typical uses with this kind of zoning and everything from a supermarket to a food and beverage to eating and drinking establishments, medical services, insurance, financial. Just thinking about uses that are available to you, but also visually consistent with the surrounding area. It would be hard to see a big GEICO sign there.
Correct, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
We, I believe we're stewards of the community, being, uh, a part of Lake County for 150 years. Of course, people can make promises and, uh, and things change, of course, but we're, again, uh, in the part of the community that, that wouldn't be a possibility there. Um, if we could further restrict it, uh, that's fine. It's tough to throw out ideas of what, what will go there. But, uh, this is a huge step, I think, for the economic development of Kelseyville, um, the growth of Kelseyville, which I understand will probably be, looked at again here pretty soon. It's been, I think, pushed off for a while. And our communities are growing. I think it's evident in the traffic we see on our roads, um, the lack of housing. And Kelseyville is, is going to expand. I think it's a, a great community that we're going to continue to be a part of. So, yeah, I think that it's going this way. We have, um, some ideas, I guess you could say, for what would happen there, but, um, it's, like I said, we're, we're wide open at this point. It's my brother and my dad and I talking about it.
Thank you.
So, so I guess for myself, um, you know, the, the unknown is, is, uh, where, where I'm at. You know, I, I, uh, I understand the bind that the applicant and the owners are in. Um, I, I recognize and appreciate, um, Mr. Borgesoni's comments, about the community growth boundary and, and not being in, within it. And I'm not sure who the previous planner was, who put the language in there, you know, bordering it or on the outer edge. I, I think we have to be in our planning process, we have to call it what it is, you know, and, and, um, I get, you know, there's a, there's a, a tremendous, um, unknown for me, you know, and, and I would like to see, um, if, if the Kelseyville area plan is going to be looked at in the near future or expansion of the community, um, I think that would be the ideal time. Um, if, if the applicant was willing to share possible ideas, I think that helps in terms of having a vision for what's to come rather than not knowing for myself. So that's kind of where I'm at at this moment.
If your commission is unclear on, again, Nicole, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if your commission is unclear on a particular item or you think there's information that is absent that could be provided, you may direct staff to provide that information and continue the item if you choose.
Any other thoughts from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I, I appreciate your comments and I'm, I'm feeling a little confused myself. And, uh, I'm, I'm just unclear about the best way to proceed. It's possible that we could continue this item and ask for a more concrete vision from the Hansons. It would be, I don't mean to imply that we would be giving the Hansons a blank check, but we are sort of approving a change in the use of the land without any understanding of what that new use might be. And I would hate to see it boomerang back on the community. I, I understand your ties to the community. I'm not implying that it would, it would necessarily be problematic, but it could be. And, um, we're, we're, we're setting the stage for that now. And, uh, I agree with Commissioner Price that it's only a small bit of the land, seven acres, that would be rezoned. And, uh, but I'm, I'm wondering if there's more that we need to think about before making a decision, decision here today without making the Hansons wait an undue, you know, longer period of time. I'd like to understand, uh, what Mark Borgesani was referring to in terms of this isn't compatible with the general plan and the uses cited were inconsistent because of the community growth boundary, that kind of thing. But I'm not prepared to deny this today by any means.
Yes, I, I don't want to deny it at this point in time. I would like to see if staff or if we could quickly pull up how much M two zoning is in the county so we could get a visual of that, um, if possible. I mean, I'm assuming it's, it's very small. One of the complaints I get from people wanting to do business or come into this county is that it is so bought up and limited. So that's the first thing that I always get. So how do we grow? How does community development occur when we can't make any changes? Uh, and I believe that we would then, whatever is proposed, the community would be able to come back if it's something that did not seem like it was going to help Kelseyville or Kelseyville would be able to speak up against it. So, um, I'm concerned, but I'm not as concerned as the fact that there aren't spots for people to do stuff with this. It just, there just aren't a lot of options. And I do feel that it is outside the community growth boundaries, uh, on the border, but that means I think that they could, then it's not going to be in the community growth boundaries as industrial, so that would be really good. And, I mean, I'm ready to approve it because whatever they do there seems like it might take quite a few years to complete. So this is an ongoing process, but at least they have options. Obviously, they tried doing hemp, uh, there. That did not work, so they probably rented it out. But there aren't a lot of options. Um, planting trees would take a lot longer, uh, in letter A. And we have a lot of vineyards and I don't know what the price of grapes, you know, the, you know, what's going on with that. So I'm open to, um, supporting this. And I did not think that this would be one of the ones I would be contemplating today.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
I, I just would like to echo what Commissioner Williams has said. Um, as of right now, it is, it is just land. It is just sitting there. And I feel that, um, the applicant has roots, has, um, wants to see growth in, in Kelseyville. Um, and I'm sure, I, I would like to give them the opportunity to at least have one foot moving forward in getting the zone change and then let them, I, I don't see something that's going to be detrimental to Kelseyville going in there. And I, and I would, I would don't want to put the carriage before the horse and give them free range to do whatever they want. But, you know, in order to get something moving, we have to start somewhere. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I am. And, and I, I'm a commissioner who believes that there has to be a certain amount of economic development and growth in Lake County every year in order to keep pace with the population, in order to remain competitive and attractive to future business opportunities and housing opportunities, all of that. And, um, I'm prepared to move forward today.
Okay, let's, if we want to go ahead and, and move forward, um, we can, we can definitely do that.
We do have a hand raised.
Public comment is closed. We do have a hand raised, um, in chambers. How would you like to handle that, Mr. Chair?
Um, let's, is it, uh, we can go ahead and open up for one more comment.
Okay, you can go ahead and approach the podium, please. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
Yeah, my name is Frank Perez and I'm the owner of Rancho de la Fuente. And I started a business there 16 years ago and it was very difficult to move on. But in his case, I, I love Kelseyville. I go there all the time. I think they're doing much better than Lakeport as far as their, their business and they do need to expand. And I'm, I'm totally for the project. And I just wanted to point this out that any time that I wanted to do anything on my property, I had to come back first and get approval for it. So if you guys are worried about somebody putting a supermarket there or a GEICO sign up, they've got to come back before the board, before the supervisors and before the public so they can do that. So they need at least a chance to get this approved so they can expand to that next step. And I personally know the family. He actually, him and his wife got married at Rancho de la Fuente. And they're a very nice family and they're very good people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Chair, there's no one else in chambers that would like to speak if you would like to close public comment unless there's someone in the Zoom room.
If there's no one else in the chambers, this one last check of the Zoom room. Anybody wants to make public comment in the Zoom? Seeing no hands, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Bring it back to the board.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to say that for the initial study and negative declaration, I move the planning commission recommend that the board of supervisors find based on the initial study, IS twenty dash ninety one, that general plan amendment, GP AP twenty dash zero two and the rezone, RZ twenty dash zero two, will not have significant effect on the environment and therefore thereof. Recommend the planning commission, recommend the board of supervisors approve the proposed negative declaration with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 21st, 2021.
I'll second.
If you get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I move the planning commission recommend the board of supervisors make a motion of approval for general plan amendment, GP AP twenty dash zero two, applied for by Greg Hanson for the following reasons. One, the proposed general plan amendment is found to be consistent with the Lake County general plan, the Kelseyville area plan and the Lake County zoning ordinance. The proposedment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity. Three, as outlined in the initial study, IS twenty dash ninety one, prepared for this application, the proposed amendment will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts as outlined in the staff report dated May 21st, 2021.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I move that the planning commission has reviewed and considered the environmental effects of the rezone, RZ twenty dash zero two and general plan amendment, GP AP twenty dash zero two, as outlined in the proposed initial study, IS twenty dash ninety one, which has been prepared for this project and that the planning commission recommends that the board of supervisors approve the proposed rezoning applied for by Greg Hanson on property located at three five 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 and three four four five Big Valley Road, Kelseyville, California, nine five four five one, APNs zero zero eight dash zero three eight dash seventeen and zero zero eight zero three eight dash forty four for reasons listed in the staff report dated May 21st, 2021.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
If you'd like to note that the applicant or any person is. You'd like to note that the applicant or any person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM, honor before the seven calendar day following commission's final determination. Thank you. Going to take our 9:20 AM item, continuation from planning commission hearing, 422, 2021, major use permit, 20-28. The applicant, Gustafson Farms LLC, Justin Gustafson, owner Walter Stryker, proposed project applicant is applying for a total of 111,620 square feet of canopy, 89,620 square feet of outdoor, and 22,000 square feet of mixed light area within a total of 237,220 square feet of cultivation area and facilities included 50,000 square feet processing facility, 24,000 square feet of greenhouse for nursery, 50,000 square feet for drying facility, three storage sheds, and 23,000 square feet of greenhouse structures for mixed light canopy. Location 4440, 4460, 4520, 4550, George Road, Lakeport, California, APN 008-031-48, 008-031-60, and 008-032-43, and 008-032-44. Environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-33.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We've had a request for a five-minute break if that pleases the chair.
Yes.
Okay, looks like we are going to go ahead and start our meeting, reconvene, I should say.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, Scott DeLeon, interim community development director. As you're aware, this project came before you a few weeks ago. You heard a significant amount of testimony regarding the project from the neighbors. You heard testimony from the applicant, issues such as infractions or violations that were current and, and issues related to the use and appropriateness. You heard all that. At the time, the applicant said that he'd be willing to modify his project and, and he did, made some fairly significant modifications to it, notably removing all of the outdoor, proposed outdoor cultivation. And there were no new buildings. Everything basically stayed the same. He was just eliminating the, the outdoor cultivation or, or moving it within an existing building where, where he had room. So we felt comfortable in bringing this item back to you today because of, even though it had been modified, the, the overall impact of the project remained the same with respect to the building footprints and, and their layout. Yesterday afternoon, we received a notification from a neighbor questioning whether the airport would be considered public land and, and if so, wouldn't that potentially impact the layout of this and, and the, the proposed locations of the buildings would be in violation of the thousand-foot setback from public lands. I will confess to, as interim director, I made the decision that the airport didn't meet that, that definition. However, I have learned through the years that you should probably run things by county council and, and which I did and received a, an opinion from council that, that there could be a strong argument made to support that the airport is public land. And therefore, what we're actually, well, we, we made the applicant aware that it's, this public land issue is, is going to happen and it's going to be raised certainly this morning. And the applicant ironically had, in the very initial stages of this project, some time ago, actually had a layout where everything was 1,000 feet from the airport. So he has a, a site plan that, that could accommodate that. And our, the information that I've received from the applicant is he's willing to modify his project again to comply with that thousand-foot setback. The problem that we're having is we are now, we felt we could handle the first modification because nothing really changed with respect to the numbers of buildings and their locations. However, with, with this new information regarding the airport being considered public lands, it's going to result in a modification of their site plan and, and it will have an effect on the sequela analysis. We could, your commission could, could take public input as you did. There are still a number of other issues that were discussed at the last meeting with respect to violations and licenses and those types of things. And perhaps you'd be interested in, in hearing any update on that. But we're actually going to be recommending to you that you continue this item to allow us to use a final site plan with the final proposed locations and a completed sequela analysis document. As you know, we've been modifying it. There's a memorandum that, that modifies the previous, previous report. I'd, I'd like to see that cleaned up so that you have a final staff report with, with recommendations.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, what do you feel about continuation? Want to take some public comment? Do we want to continue the item to the next available date?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just with the familiarity of the faces that are in chambers, I feel that it might be best to, for the applicant and for the public, to both maybe voice their concerns, open it up, maybe give a little bit more information and give them information that we also have received and collect information from the public and, and from staff and then possibly continue the item. I'm open to that.
Mr. Chair? I appreciate interim director DeLeon's comments. I read the agency comments carefully and I saw your comment in an email exchange about finding it is not a public land. So that was a question I was going to raise today, so I appreciate that clarification. I would support continuing this matter until a future date, but I would also hope that with this extra time involved, if we do continue, that the issue about NOVs, notices of violations, could be clarified. That's still a major sticking point for me. And what the specific question I have is if it's, the land is in violation until he has given permission to mediate. And there were some meetings that were supposed to occur after the last hearing we had, and I'd like to know if progress was made on that. I'd hate to come back after another delay and find out that those underlying violations were still in place. My question, Nicole, is would that land have to be remediated before the cultivation operation could begin? So that would be a question going forward if we continue this. And not a question needs to be answered today, but that's the question I will ask.
Well, I can, I can certainly look into it further. However, as it relates to this particular application, if there are, one of the findings you have to make as a commission in order to vote to approve this item is that it's not in violation. And so if it is in violation, I would suggest that you can't make that finding and whatever that, however that violation is defined. So if the agency who has created, who has assigned the violation, whom, with whom the applicant is in violation, has determined that there is a violation, then I would argue that there is a violation. If that agency has determined there is no longer a violation, then I would argue that there is no longer a violation. And therefore, you could conceivably make the finding that you're required to make to approve this permit. So I'm not sure.
No, my question is a cart before the horse kind of question. I realize that we're not going to prove anything, or I'm not going to, that's still in violation.
Right.
On the other hand, if it is found not to be in violation, that's the point at which, as I understand the process, Mr. Gustafson could start remediating the culverts and fix those things that are in violation. But would that have to occur before the land would be considered ready to prepare for a cultivation operation? Or could those two things occur simultaneously? And again, I'm not asking for an answer immediately.
Right. Well, I'm, I also want to make sure I understand the question completely so I can give you a full answer. And it sounds to me like it's two separate questions as far as violation versus the remediation requirements that, that were the result of clearing up the violation, I suppose. So you could approve, you could approve the item before you to, if there were no violations. And if, if the agency who had determined there were no violations as part of their process will make that determination on the expectation that certain actions will take place in the future, arguably, you could, the commission could probably put conditions on the permit that would, that would address that. Say that this, this application or this permit would not be effective unless and until or, but I would have to know specifics as far as what it is, is, that is being remediated because it may essentially be something that is in violation of the county ordinance, but I wouldn't know unless I saw it.
What triggers my question is an agency comment from Dustin Patterson with Fish and Wildlife. And this is dated May 7, 2021. It's the most recent comment I can find from an agency about this in the, in the package. And it says, "To Satur, in regard to the violations on the properties managed or owned by Mr. Gustafson, to say that deficiencies are undersized culverts or inherited from the owners is not correct. The violations identified and documented by the Fish and Wildlife Department in our notices of violation to Mr. Gustafson and the property owners are much more diverse and complex, and the violations carry significant environmental damage. Three out of the five properties that receive notices of violation are not leases but are either owned by Mr. Gustafson or his family. The two properties that he has leased from, that he has leased from include violations directly related to Mr. Gustafson's cannabis cultivation, which we observed on site." So it sounds like it's messy and I just don't want to necessarily see a new cannabis operation built on top of that mess. End of comment.
I was reading late last night and just double checking everything on this project. And I really feel that the 1,000 feet, I looked it up. If you type in public lands on GIS, the airport is listed. So I understand that. But I also understand that this project has been changed to do indoor or not outdoor. I think it says very specifically that outdoor cultivation will not occur 1,000 feet. So that does not seem to be the issue today. The notice of violations, though, is an issue. Fishing game, yes. There is also something that we have in front of us, staff report stating that growing without a state license and how does that work? So it's not just the fishing game, but I really wanted to see a state license here today. And so, you know, it says very specifically that you must, early activation does not give you permission to put plants in the ground. And so plants were put in the ground. And now we're in a situation where we're being told the only way that he can get a state license is through us, and that's not the case. So I would like to make sure that this is all dealt with as well. I don't mind postponing it, but I don't, my vote is not in on this at this point in time. I really want to make sure that the CDFA is given the green light and that would be by a license. They would only do that by the notice of the violations being cleaned up. I have been made aware that the violations should be ready to be inspected. I don't know if they have. I would really like to see, and we could deal with public comment, maybe, maybe fishing game, maybe CDFA is on a Zoom call there. I'd kind of want some more information there because I don't want to keep tossing this down the road because it just doesn't make any sense. Again, if, if all the violations are cleaned up as far as I'm concerned and it's ready to go, then I will vote for this. But I, I have to really make sure about that. And some of the comments and questions I get daily are, you know, what happens when you grow without a state license? Well, if you get a state license, then the state is saying that you are good to go. So that's how I feel about it. So I don't know if those questions can be answered today. But I, again, I do feel a little bit weary about kicking this down the road. If it looks like there's been progress, I mean, I like to see progress. So if there is proof of progress, I really understand that and that sits well with me.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
But I don't, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if, if you guys are going to move forward with opening public comment or if we're just going to go ahead and continue this. That was kind of unclear to me. I think we're all on the same page as far as violations and not wanting to make any type of, you know, decision today, but.
I'm prepared to accommodate people who are here today to.
Absolutely. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, if we have several people in the chambers, I'm, I'm open to that as well.
And, and does staff have any answers to any of our questions on the violations? So has there been progress or what is going on with fishing game? I mean, we are going to have to ask you. Are these violations cleared? Hmm? No, I don't, I don't want to ask the applicant if the violations have been cleared. I want to know from my staff.
It haven't been cleared fully, but it is in progress. There is some interactions with the applicant and the state and it's, it's working toward it.
We were assured by the applicant that it was just a question of one more meeting and everything was basically lined up and the light would be green. And I just don't, I'm not getting the feeling that's the case, that there hasn't been any progress made since we last addressed this issue. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we do have someone in chambers. If you wanted to open up public comment, that's your call.
Yes, let's go ahead and open up public comment and give the opportunity for anybody to comment.
Thank you.
And I'm actually here to represent the applicant.
Okay, excellent. Just be sure to state your first and last name and you'll have three minutes.
All right. I am, I have three minutes?
For your first chunk. Yeah, so three minutes, please.
Okay. My name's Joey Lewis and I'm representing Joey Gustafson. We just thought it was easier if just Joey's were here to represent for your sake to remember names. Anyway, I'm glad I came and, and I'm listening to your concerns about the state applications or the state violations that were so kindly brought up at the last meeting. And I work for Moreland Consulting and we have been retained by Mr. Gustafson to help him with that. So we are in the process and in our opinion, those violations are pretty minor altogether and we will get him through those. And then at the next, if you do decide to chair it or table it today, we will be here. Is it okay if I just?
Yeah.
So we will be here to address those concerns that you had, Mr. Commissioner and everyone else. We agree with Mr. DeLeon. We would like it tabled. We don't want to run into any issues that are going to maybe crash us on an appeal. But I do want to make a little statement about Mr. Gustafson. It seems like at the last meeting, there were a lot of fingers pointed at him as if he's like some sort of rogue cannabis grower or criminal or any sort of thing like that. Mr. Gustafson has been a business owner in this community for over 15 years. And although I'm representing him on this application today, I can tell you with my past dealings with Mr. Gustafson, who I've known since junior high school, he is outstanding. And I can say that as a former councilman in the city of Clear Lake and mayor, where most of his other business operations are. I can say that as the former executive director of the Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce, that he was always an outstanding corporate citizen and we never had any issues with his businesses. I can also say that on regards to being the former district liaison for the Board of Equilization. And he has a auto body shop, which is often a business that is out of compliance a lot with the board. Mr. Gustafson did not have those issues. Mr. Gustafson is an honorable businessman and he is a Lake County lifelong resident. So he's the type of person that we want to succeed in this type of, type of business. So in on seeing that, just before the pandemic, Mr. Gustafson actually bought. So in on seeing that, just before the pandemic, Mr. Gustafson actually bought one of the restaurants in Clear Lake that were going to be closed, and dozens of people were going to be laid off. And he came in at the 11th hour and purchased that business to make sure that those employees still have their jobs. So he wants to do the right thing. Like so many people in this cannabis business now, they're coming out of the light and into the dark and trying to work through these hoops to do what's right for their business, to comply with the local zoning. And that's kind of where Mr. Gustafson is, and we are working diligently to get him to where he needs to be, and especially with this project. I did a site visit. I have a little bit of planning experience in my background, too. And I encourage everyone from the commission to please go out and check out what the violations are physically, because they're really not that big of a deal. And he has bent over backwards and trying to modify the project to make sure that the neighbors are more satisfied with what he's doing there. So we look forward to continuing to work with staff, to work with the neighbors, and figure out what will fit that property, which is prime property for this type of use, as says in the staff report. And anyway, I'm here to answer any further questions and address any concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, what is the precise status of conversations or meetings, getting your heads together with Fish and Wildlife? I continue to be disturbed by this email that's dated only this month, May 7.
Yeah, so we're running up on the holidays, so we do have another meeting that we're going to have with the person in our organization that really addresses the state issues.
Was there a meeting held since we last heard this issue? We were assured that there was something in the works.
I believe right after, when I did my site visit, I believe he had just met with them. I'm not real clear on the details of that meeting. But if the commission is really concerned about that, I will make sure that that information is available when we come back to you.
This commissioner is that concerned, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If anybody else in the chambers wants to make a comment?
I do have one member of the public that wishes to speak.
Thank you.
Please be sure to state your first and last name. Thank you.
Bill Bernetti, I live on George Road, 4750, and welcome back, Joey. Joey and I go back wailing a long time. Anyway, I happen to disagree with Joey on this a little bit. I think the land is not the perfect location for this. I came in to speak today on the violations issue. That's already went over, so I'll save your time on that. But I think, you know, remember, we put out a petition with over 80 signatures on the neighbors around that area, and very much opposed to this project, don't feel it's compatible. And it was interesting for me to read an article the other day of one of our neighboring counties that's starting to do a study, taking into consideration neighborhood compatibility. That encompasses a lot of things. That's traffic odors and everything else. Happy to hear that the outdoor grow is gone. That was one of our big issues. But I'd like to remind you that it's still a very, you know, rural agricultural area. George Road is a very small road itself, underdeveloped. And the neighbors see this as just being a complete change in lifestyle, traffic going up and down the road, traffic going in and out, creating dust, tucks in all hours of the night. I know when we had the supermarket downtown, one of the big things was the city mandated that we keep our deliveries within a certain timeframe because of the neighborhood, right? This is the same kind of issue. And we have so much open land around this area. You know, I'll remind you that I spoke the last time I spoke on behalf of a cannabis deal in the morning, and then that afternoon opposed to this one. I am not opposed to cannabis. I understand it's a huge revenue source for the county. It's going to be a growing industry, and it's viable. But there's certain things about it that has to take into consideration where the placement is. You've got at least 100 or so people living around that area right there, and their lives are going to be impacted by this. And that's the big objective. And again, I think even if you move the building so that they're 1,000 feet away, you're still going to have major objections from the community around that, from the neighborhood that lives around that area. These kind of operations should go out in areas that don't have a whole bunch of people living around them. And that's my talk for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the chamber?
I do have one more as of right now. You can approach the podium.
My name is Don Duker. I live adjacent to that property. And obviously, we've all been looking at this for a long time. I hold in my hand, it's kind of ironic, the initial activation permit, which was issued exactly a year ago today. It has with it 33 conditions of approval. Some of them are timed items, some of them are items that had to be completed before cultivation. The minute it was issued, it was dismissed, because a lot of those were never completed, let alone before cultivation or in the timeframe given. The very first item includes the incorporation of the project management plan, which is over 100 pages additionally. It's pretty detailed. And I think if the cultivation of marijuana going forward in this county is going to be successful, there has to be some credibility. And if you have a detailed plan, and you ignore it the day you get authorization, it doesn't do any good. And talking about all the wonderful things you're going to do isn't near as effective as actually doing some of the things you say. That hasn't been the case in this deal. I know that they'd like you to believe the neighbors are being consulted and cooperative, but I don't think you'll find a single neighbor that will support this in any way, shape, or form. I think you are hard pressed to find a way you can justify putting that in on a very narrow dead-end road with an increasing amount of traffic. In the current staff report, you'll notice the number of jobs they're proposing has doubled, because apparently jobs, I think, are an attraction. And I believe in jobs. I believe in economic growth. I think it's great that the planning department is working closely with the applicant. But I do think it's a wrong project in the wrong place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I don't... Go ahead.
There's no more public comment. We'll go ahead and close.
There's no one here in chambers, Mr. Chair, but... Oh, actually, we do have one more. And then I'm not sure about your Zoom room. I can't see it in there.
Okay.
We do have one hand raised in the Zoom room at this time.
Okay, let's let the member of the public here in chambers go ahead and speak, and then we can go to the Zoom room, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Also, excuse me, we have the... We got an email from the applicant saying that he wasn't able to do or to use the Zoom link. That was posted 54 minutes ago. So I don't know if he's the one that's going to be on Zoom.
So if he's having issues with the Zoom link, he should have been able to refresh. Nonetheless, the meeting ID and password information is posted in the agenda. He can use that on the Zoom clients and access that way, or he could even go to the Zoom website and join with the meeting ID and password as well. I don't know if anybody has the way to communicate that to him.
Thank you. Let's continue with comments.
Thank you. Go ahead and just make sure you state your first and last name.
Hi, I hope you can hear me. My name is Diane Duker. I live at 4675 George Road, and I'm not qualified to speak on the technicalities of all of the infractions. But I just wanted to just tell you one little thing that was on the way here today. We stopped and looked at the front of the property, and garbage is strewn everywhere. And it's been like that for months. And the funny thing was, the crows are now taking the garbage bags apart. And when I took a picture, it was a live picture, and I got a picture of one of the crows carrying garbage off. And it just was... It's been like this for months and months, and that's just a small infraction, but it's one that affects us every day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. May we please have our...
I do have one more hand raised. I apologize, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
You could go ahead.
Bill Timmel, friends with Joey Gustafson and partners in the project. I would just want to say that you guys should probably do a site visit, and you would definitely discount a lot of the comments that you just heard. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. If we can have our hand in the Zoom room, please.
All right. The hand I have raised up in the Zoom is from Nathan Mastin. Nathan, I have sent you permission to speak. It looks like you're muted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Thank you so much. My name is Nate Madsen. I'm with Rain and Zep PLC. We are new to this project, so some of the concerns that are getting raised are new information to me, but I can speak to many of the procedural questions that you, the commission has raised. First and foremost, I'd just like to say that any NOVs that remain would have to be addressed prior to cultivation being authorized. That's just a necessary step in the process. And I do believe there's progress being made. And I think the commission should know that any NOVs that rose from CDFW would result in either the need of an LSAA or a modification to an existing LSAA, which would be a lake and stream bed alteration agreement with the department. And those, simply put, take time. There is a notice, you know, once notification is filed and the fee paid, there's a 30-day window where CDFW has time to process the notification. And then there's an additional 60-day window where they have time to develop the agreement. So a minimum of 90 days would be anticipated for that procedure to resolve those issues. So I understand that the commission is concerned that those NOVs may not have been completely resolved at this time, but that's just a process. And then, you know, if there were any actual work required, remediation work, that would then turn to probably needing a waterboard 401 permit, and that in turn would also take time. And those actually do not have the same restrictions as CDFW. So there is being progress made on the NOVs. And just please understand that that is a process, and the department takes time to do that. And it would be impossible for the applicant to sidestep those agencies or their procedure. It is a point that was raised is that, and I heard some minor misinformation can go around, it is impossible to attain a state license without a county permit. You have to have local jurisdiction authorization prior to being able to get a state license. So approval at this level is a necessary component of getting a state license, and our office would be engaged as necessary to attain that. I see my time is nearly up, so I would just add that I believe this project is cited in a good location. We're talking about rural ag land. I do feel for the neighbors and their concerns, and I might suggest that considering some traffic restrictions as to time and duration might help address those concerns. And with my time expired, I will refrain from any more comments. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
And I think that under early activation, anyone who has a license understands, and this is what the neighbor brought this up, is that there are time restrictions. So that means what is being said is that he violated those terms of early activation. And he did have a county approval at one point in time, so he had county approval. He had to get those licenses, and he grew without them. So I think we're all very aware of what's going on here, and we want it all cleared up. So I just really want to make sure that we're stating that, that there are terms of conditions that need to be met that were not met. He needs this state license, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Mr. Chair?
Let's go ahead and close public comment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I associate myself with Commissioner Williams' comment from just a moment ago. And with respect to Mr. Mastin, I appreciate his addressing the violations. My question is not a process question. I, as a commissioner, won't vote for a permit if there's still outstanding violation. I mean, that's clear. But what I would still like to understand is whether all of the remediation work has to be done before the development of a cannabis operation, or does the work get done simultaneously? Is it possible to be done simultaneously? But it seems hard to me to see an operation begun when none of the remediation has been done. So that's my question. It's not a question of what the commission does when the land is still in violation, just to be clear to the public and to Mr. Mastin.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Do you close public comment? We'll bring it back to the commission.
I apologize. Do we have a set date on the continuance? Would it be the June 10 meeting? I know you guys mentioned two weeks. Is that going to be enough time to... For the applicant? Do we have like a set date, or are we just going to table it?
I don't think we can take it.
Yeah.
The 10th, because they were saying they needed three months, is what it sounded like.
90 days?
I would say as early as possible, but probably two weeks is too soon, so...
All right.
So if you could put it somewhere out of month, maybe?
I'll look at the calendar. Thank you.
Commissioners, if we're going to be redoing a staff report and reevaluating CEQA, that's going to be a lengthy time period, and the clearing of the violations will take some time as well. So I... We're going to need some time.
Council, do you recommend that we just table it with no date at this time, and then they can resubmit? Or I'm just looking for some direction, either we're going to give a date or we're not.
Yeah, your commission may, if there isn't... If you don't have a definitive date to which you are continuing, date and time certain, you may continue it essentially indefinitely. But the criteria for that, once you do that, then notice requirements attach and so on for the next time the item returns to the agenda.
Okay.
So yes, you may continue it.
Without a date certain?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I had some questions for staff, if I may. So what's come up here is that, you know, how do you get your state license? Well, I want to make sure, as this continues, I get a lot of calls saying that the county is not telling the state that they are in process. I don't want this one falling through the cracks either. In other words, we leave here today, I want to make sure that it says that it's in process, because he's not going to be able to complete anything unless it is stated to the state that very clearly that this is in process. He does not need a permit from us right now. He needs your office to make sure that it's stated very clearly that he's in process. So then we won't keep going back around about how does this work? So I'd want to make sure that when we walk away, I don't want to get a phone call or find out from the CDFAs that, again, this one was told it's not in process, because he will not be able to clear up these violations. So is there a way to make sure that I have someone saying that that will happen before we leave this situation here?
Your comments are noted, and we'll work with CDFAs.
Thank you.
And just for the record, I did a site visit before this came the first time, and I've been out there. Thank you.
I also drove down the road as well to the end of the gate there.
Yeah, I've not made a site visit, but I would like to. So I'll have that scheduled. And do we have any motion or anything we want to entertain at this time?
Mr. Chair? I move that the planning commission continue to a future date for their action on major use permit UP 20-28, applicant Gustafson Farms, Joseph Gustafson, owner Walter Stryker, for a project in on George Road in Lakeport, California.
Second. Second.
Get a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion secured.
Thank you. Let's take our 925 item, public hearing to consider major use permit, UP 19-13, to consider approval of commercial cannabis cultivation project on a 230-plus acre property in consideration of adopted mitigated negative declaration, IS 19-25. The applicant owner is Tiffany Devitt, proposed project 12, 10A type 3 medium outdoor cannabis cultivation licenses, requesting 650,000 square feet of cannabis cultivation area and 1A type 13 self-distribution license located on 2800 Manning Road, Lakeport, California, APN 008-009-03, environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration.
And then I would...
Mr. Chairman, Eric Porter, Associate Planner, County of Lake.
Eric, can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Is this Canacraft? I would like to recuse, it is not. Okay.
Applicant is Tiffany Devitt. I believe it's called Kindness Farms. And...
Thank you. I will be recusing myself.
My bad. Mr. Chairman, I want to confirm the file number. I was trying to set up my papers, and I just want to make sure I'm going to launch into the right file. I have UP 19-13?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. This is a proposal. It's had kind of a long and bumpy road. The original applicant is not the applicant that's before you today. The original applicant did not pass live scan. So Ms. Devitt took over the property, changed the scope approximately a year ago from four acres of outdoor cannabis to 10 acres of outdoor cannabis. Application was complete prior to December 15th of last year, which is relevant, because the property is in a, it's on a floodplain. The entire property is in an AO floodplain. But the relevance is, this property also falls under ordinance number 3103, which requires indoor cultivation on high-value mapped farmland. And the entire parcel is within that defined mapped area. I talked with Ms. Devitt's representatives, and they agreed that the scope can change, and they are eligible for a two-year transition from outdoor to greenhouse. And that would effectively change the amount of cultivation area. It would cut it in half. Condition number A22, I believe, addresses that transition. I want to make sure I got the number right. Looks like it's A21. And so she would have two years essentially to build greenhouses, to revise the site plan. This would not have to come back before the planning commission has its structure. It could be done internally. The CEQA impact would be essentially cut in half, although there would be some stormwater runoff concerns that would have to be addressed, because the amount of roof area would increase. Getting back to the project, the site is right on Clear Lake. It's a lake-fronting property. It's 236 acres. It's zoned ag. It's got overlay zones of waterway, floodway, fringe, and wetlands. We had them do a wetland delineation study to make sure that the cultivation area was not within that defined wetland area. And it's set back well over 100 feet away from the border of the wetland. One of the other things that we require is a matter of course, anytime there's a floodplain involved, is the removal of flower pots seasonally. So they would essentially have to move any planted areas outside of the floodplain during the winter months. And that's also a condition of approval within this project. There was initially substantial neighbor objections. There are established ag uses to the west, south, and east of the project area. Some of these concerns from neighbors, as far as I can tell, have been alleviated by the fact that they're going to be required to go inside of greenhouses. I don't think all of the concerns from the neighbors that have been raised are alleviated, but I think most of them have been. So today's hearing will tell if there's still great concerns on the part of the neighbors that have traditional ag uses. There are impacts that had not been associated with the outdoor that are now associated with greenhouses. Those are primarily aesthetics. The air quality concerns remain. They were true with both iterations of the project. The biological resource mitigation measures were taken from the bio study that we received. Likewise, we received a cultural study that recommended pretty much standard conditions, notification of the culturally affiliated tribes if any artifacts or relics or remains are uncovered during site disturbance. Water quality, this is one that we don't usually find within the conditions of approval. But mitigation measure HYD-1 requires the removal of pots between November 1st and April 1st of each year during the rainy season. Noise is standard. The three standard conditions address noises during and after construction. As is the case with all major use permits, we had to make six findings in chapter 51.4, that the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and morals and comfort and general welfare persons residing or working in the neighborhood. Second one, the site for the project is adequately sized and locationally appropriate. Number three, streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate. Number four, that there are adequate public or private services to serve the project. That includes police and fire coverage. Number five, the project is in conformance of all applicable provisions and policies of the code, general plan, and in this case, the Lakeport area plan. And number six, no violations of chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26 of the Lake County Code are present on the site. Three additional findings we have to meet are found in Article 27, subsection AT. The proposed use complies with all development standards described in section 1.1. We found that it did. It's fully compliant with the requirements, particularly within 3103, with the transition of outdoor to greenhouse within two years. Number two, the applicant is qualified to make the application. The applicant has passed live scan, and we have no issues with the applicant's background. Number three, that the application complies with the qualifications for a permit. Given ordinance number 3103 and the applicant's willingness to convert from outdoor to greenhouse, and given all the other applicable sections that were applied to the review, including this CEQA review, we found that this project, as amended, can be made to comply with all the applicable ordinances, regulations, rules, and plans. Therefore, we are recommending that the planning commission adopt mitigated negative declaration, IS 1927, for use permit UP 1913. There's a typo in here. It says 15. And that the planning commission approve use permit UP 1913 with the findings that are listed. The two motions, I need to make a correction on the major use permit motion. If the planning commission decides to approve this use permit today, you need to refer to file number UP 19-13 rather than 19-15, as stated in the motion. And with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Eric, just to be clear, and then also on the IS, on the sample motions, is that a typo as well in the 19-27? No, that's correct.
If it says 19...
No, it's 25. It's supposed to be 25, IS 19-25, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I appreciate you.
Any questions from the commission?
Not at this time.
One thing I do need to mention, this morning, we received an email in support of the project from James Araby, who's a representative for UFCW Local 5, a local union that represents many grocery store workers. He's in support of the project, and I can hand these out to the commissioners that are present.
Thank you, Eric.
Yes, thank you, Eric. I've had the opportunity to read the email.
As far as comments go from the commission, I did do a site visit. I was very pleased with the location of the project, even in regards to the maps and, you know, it being lakefront and surrounded by ag. I feel that where this project footprint is actually located is ideal with all the setbacks. So, that's my two cents. But if you want to open it up to public comment, Mr. Chair, I think...
Yes, thank you. Let's go ahead and open public comment. For anybody in the chambers or via Zoom, feel free to raise your hand or approach the podium.
I do have someone here in the chambers.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Angie Dodd. I'm here to represent the applicant Tiffany Devitt and answer any questions. We also have Brad Johnson on Zoom to answer any questions. He's Ms. Devitt's attorney, if that comes up. I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications. Thanks, Eric, for all your hard work on this. Much, much appreciated. The cultivation is actually in-ground in amended soil. And it's, at the end of the season, it's planted with a nitrogen fixing crop, and then cattle is allowed to graze on it again. So there are no pots at this time. So it's all put back to a, kind of a hay, grass seed-type crop that the cows enjoy. The other thing I wanted to mention is CDF, they did early activate last year, four acres. And as far as we are aware, there are absolutely no complaints. Department of Fish and Wildlife came out and inspected the site and submitted a letter to the applicants that the site is not under their jurisdiction, there are no water bodies, it's all well outside of setbacks. CDFA also inspected the site via METRIC, and they were in compliance. I'm trying to think of any other items that would come up. Yeah, they operated with all their state licenses. Last year, they planted a nice cover crop. There's plenty of pictures showing how well that filled in. I know they've gotten support from their neighbor to the east, which is Robledo Farms. They also share farm employees with Robledo Farms. I know their support with the property to the south. And then the nearest parcel line to the southeast is over 700 feet away. So just some characteristics of the site. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have as public comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Porter, I would like clarification on the fact that they're not using pots. That's new information to me, and I'll need to modify that condition if the commission decides to approve this file today. So can I request that Ms. Dodd come back up and clarify what exactly they're going to be doing during the rainy season?
Yes, please, Ms. Dodd.
Yes, Angie Dodd, again. They, what they do is they harvest, and then they till and plant with a five-seed mix cover crop. And they keep that cover crop in place until they are ready to plant the next season, usually end of March, early April. And I usually call that the fallow season, which is typically from the beginning of November through the end of March. Is that sufficient, Eric?
Yeah, I captured it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Angie, if you wouldn't mind approaching the podium again. Nice to see you again. I associate you with the Gwinoc project as well. There was a comment from Public Works in a two-year-old email now, raising some questions about the construction of the driveway and encroachment onto Soda Bay Road. Are there in fact issues involving that? There was a letter from a concerned resident about, as trucks come off of the property onto Soda Bay Road, there's enhanced potential for...
Yeah, so there's been discussion. So there are two access points to the parcel. One is off of Manning Road, so, which is to the, I call that the, get my directions right.
I think it's Stone Drive, and then Stone turns into Manning off of Soda Bay. So it's Soda Bay, Stone, and then to Manning.
Yeah, and then there's also an access easement that has been used, not as frequent as that one straight off of Soda Bay Drive. One of the conditions of approval is that that encroachment has to be to county standards. I know that Tiffany has spoken with the neighbors regarding that encroachment, and they're going to clear vegetation to increase line of sight. One of the conditions is also to gravel that encroachment to reduce dust. So I know those, not encroachment, sorry, easement, so that, to reduce dust. So I know those two things have been discussed. But there are two accesses, one access points, one is Manning Road, and one is Soda Bay Road. So it kind of mixes the traffic between the two. I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions before I sit down?
No, I don't think so. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I do have, did you want to speak? I do have someone here in chambers who'd like to speak as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Perez, owner of Rancho de la Fuente. This project is right behind our property, directly behind our property. And they've been actually very helpful with their security, with our security, working together to, you know, collaborate their work and keep things safe back there. We've been in operation since 2015, and we've had absolutely no problems whatsoever. And they're an asset to our operation. So we're very happy to have them back there. They're very respectful. They keep everything clean. They have the same type of operation. They grow hay. We grow hay. They have cattle. We have goats periodically that clean and graze there. But we're all for the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody in the Zoom room who wishes to comment?
Mr. Chair, if I may, there's another hand that was raised here in chambers.
Okay, thank you.
Please, thank you. Just be sure to state your first and last name for me, please.
My name is Rich Anderson. I'm actually the owner of the property out there, 2800 Manning Road. I guess more accurately, the current caretaker. The property's been in our family for about 100 years, and will continue to be in our family after my role is completed. But I can tell you, you know, my grandparents started with cattle, and that was the primary support of the family for a long time. When my grandparents passed, my mom inherited the property, and it basically just sat. And it became kind of a financial burden. It became, I think, probably a fire hazard, a risk to the properties around it. And when my mom passed and I inherited the property, I struggled a lot with what's going to happen here. It's a big piece of property. 236 acres is a lot to manage. We did have cattle out there, friends of the family that we, you know, used to help graze and knock down the hay. But again, it was still a financial burden, and it was a resource that wasn't being utilized. And when we came across this group that was interested in doing cannabis cultivation out there, you know, we're a little bit skeptical, but really looked into what they were doing and how they were doing it. And we're very impressed. You know, I think has been mentioned before from Frank as well. I mean, this is a good group. It's not kind of the fly-by-night stuff. I do commercial real estate as my primary source of revenue, and run into a lot of commercial cannabis guys that have a wing and a prayer, and they hope that it works. And that's not been the case with these guys, certainly. You know, it's an agricultural site. This is, I think, is the highest and best use for it. It works very well with the cattle that are out there. Angie talked about the kind of the symbiotic relationship between when the cannabis is there, the cattle move around it. When the cannabis is gone, there's a cover crop that the cattle really enjoy. And then the cattle leave presents that help the cannabis, right? So it's kind of the circle of life. So we've been very pleased with the relationship with them over the last, you know, year of them being on the property and several years before that, trying to work through this process. And we're excited to, you know, potentially keep this going. I know that there have been a lot of feedback from neighbors or people in the area just about cannabis in general and in ag zones and this farmland of super significance or whatever it is. It makes me think about, I grew up in Lake County, and I remember when we were the pear capital of the world. There used to be a big sign in front of Kelseyville, and that was, I thought it was the funniest thing. And I remember that there was a lot of community uproar when grapes came to town. You know, oh, look at all these sellouts getting rid of their pears for this high cash crop and these grapes. And LA County is well-known for the wine industry, right? these grapes. And LA County is well-known for the wine industry, right? It supports the economy here. It's become a destination. And I believe that's where cannabis is going. I think cannabis can be just as beneficial to the environment and the local economy as grapes have been. So we're excited to be, you know, involved in this with the group that we are involved with and what they're doing and how they're doing it. And hopefully we can find a way to keep everything moving in that direction. And Frank's been a great neighbor, too. So I'll put that on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anybody else in the chambers or the Zoom room?
Mr. Chair, I have no hands at this time in chambers. Jake.
Thank you.
And I currently have no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, let's go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the commission for any questions, any thoughts. I did have a few questions. If any of the commissioners want to speak first or have any other thoughts, questions?
No, Mr. Chair, not me.
Sure, I have a comment to make, Mr. Chair. I actually did a site visit to the property. I met Mrs. Devitt and other associates there. They're very helpful in answering my questions. I noticed security as soon as I walked or as soon as I drove in. They explained to me the management for the soil, which was set here today with nitrogen crops, like to bring back the nitrogen back into the soil. I think they're doing everything very sustainable and also like water conservation efforts with the way that they're going to be doing their operation. They have this film that goes over where the plants are going to be to prevent like.
Evaporation.
Evaporation, thank you. So it was really cool to see the technology that they're going to be or that they're using there. I also seen the barn that they have there and how they kept the outside as the original barn, but the inside, they're going to be using it for their drying. So it was really cool to, I didn't even notice what it was inside till they showed me. So it was really nice to see everything that they're doing on their property. So thank you for allowing me to go and visit.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no comments personally at this time, if you wanted to ask your questions.
Yes, thank you. I guess this question is going to be for Ms. Dodd. I did receive the invitation to attend the site visit, but unfortunately, I was out of town for the past few weeks. So I guess some of the concerns that I have, I know not a lot of information surfaced in the cultural resource reports. Prior to 2018, I was the tribal historic preservation officer for the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, who's right down the road from the site. Unfortunately, the tribe did not make any comments to the project, but I do know firsthand that there are a lot of oral accounts of the land use that is currently up for, in front of us today. I was surprised at the cultural resource report by Mr. Flaherty. Didn't find any one flake of obsidian or anything on the site. There is also, I don't have it in front of me, but there's also accounts from the Lake County historian Henry Malden of activities in that same area, which did not make it into any of the documents. So my main question, I guess, is in regards to the study, Mr. Flaherty, I see the addendum was in 2020, and I know that it says the entire project site was viewed and traversed. But in terms of the lake levels now, the shoreline area is of concern. A lot of the current known archaeological cultural resource sites are actually on the shoreline of the lake as it recedes. And so with nothing found in the cultural resource report, I am a little disturbed that not anything was identified. And so I guess my concern is going forward, you know, the type of sensitivity with the project, the land use. I appreciate the little history lesson from Mr. Anderson about the land. And so I just want to bring that to your attention, and I'm hopeful if a site visit is still available, I would like to come out to the site if possible. So those are the only questions I wanted to raise and kind of concerns that I had.
Yes, yes, please.
So Angie Dodd, again, representing the applicant. So I did speak with the applicants about this. I haven't spoken with the property owner about this, and they're very amenable to having you, I don't know where to look.
I don't know where the camera is.
Eagle, they're very amenable to having you come out there and look at the site again. I think I encourage that. So we spoke about it, and that's not a problem at all.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Brown, Scott DeLeon. It's my understanding, and perhaps the owner or the representative can further elaborate. It's my understanding, there's a conservation easement on this property that protects the shoreline and the wetland area, and the project that's being proposed is well outside that and doesn't have any encroachment into that easement. So your concerns about the cultural resources that are down near the lake are going to be protected through that conservation easement.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Scott. I do recall that easement. I wasn't sure if it was this property. That's why I didn't bring it up. But thank you for refreshing my memory on that.
If no other commissioners have any questions or comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Yes, please do.
I move that the planning commission find that the initial study IS 19-25, excuse me, 15, applied for by Tiffany Devitt on property located at 2800 Manning Road, Lakeport, and further described as APN 008-009-03, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 27, 2021, and as amended here today.
Just one question. Did you say 19-21? I think it's 25. IS. You said 25, and then I think you changed to 21.
I re-corrected myself.
Yep.
Yes, so it will be IS 19-25.
Second?
Your roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
He's.
Oh, he recused himself. I'm sorry about that. Motion so carried.
Further, I move that the planning commission find that the use permit UP 19-13, applied for by Tiffany Devitt on property located at 2800 Manning Road, Lakeport, and further described as APN 008-009-03, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and Section 27 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the major use permit granted, oh, excuse me, be granted, subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report, and dated May 27, 2021, and as amended here today.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, Eric Porter, that's what the changes that were discussed today?
Correct. I wanted to, I added "as amended here today." Okay, as long as we're on the same page.
Second?
Your roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
Thank you. Doesn't he have to read this?
Yeah.
Do I have to read that?
Well, just so he knows to read it.
Mr. Chair, you can go ahead and read the, that's the last motion, so you can read the note.
Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. Appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seven calendar day, bonding commission's final determination. So are we doing, do we want to continue with our 9:30 item? Or do we need a break?
I'm prepared to move forward, just keep going. Are you guys okay? Commissioner Haas, you guys okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a public hearing to consider major use permit UP-1915? Oh, wait, is that the one we just did? Major use permit UP-1915, consider approval of commercial cannabis cultivation project on a 44-plus acre property, and consider of adoption mitigated negative declaration, IS 19-27. The applicant owner, Legendary Farms LLC, proposes project, 1A Type 3 medium outdoor cannabis cultivation licenses, requesting 43,560 square feet of cannabis canopy area, and 1A Type 13 self-distribution license, location 2290 Soda Bay Road, Lakeport, California, APN 008-010-29, environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Porter, still, associate planner of Lake County. This project is directly beneath Ms. Devitt's property. This property is just over 41 acres in size, and the applicant's requesting 1A Type 3 medium outdoor cultivation license. As was the case with the last one, this area is in a mapped farmland protection area. This application was complete prior to December 15 of 2020 and is eligible for a transition from outdoor to greenhouse. Talked to the applicant. She was amenable to making that transition. And so one of the conditions of approval, I believe it's number A21, allows for that transition to occur per ordinance number 3103. I want to confirm that condition number, yeah, it's condition number, well, it's like it's A20. Applicant was granted EA last year. We have not issued EA this year due to the timing of this hearing. So the applicant has submitted for the 1A Type 3 and for the 1A Type 13 self-distribution license. Project will change from an 1A Type 3 outdoor to an 1A Type 3B mixed light inside of greenhouses, which will affect the allowable cultivation area. It'll effectively be cut from 43,560 square feet of canopy to 22,000 square feet of canopy at the end of the two-year transition period. The property is entirely within the flood plain, as was the case with Ms. Devitt's property. And as far as we know, they're going to use above-ground flower pots. So the applicant, I believe, is here today. I know Mr. Perez, the property owner, is here. If, in fact, they're going to do a similar treatment to what Ms. Devitt proposed and not use above-ground flower pots, and we'll have to amend a condition to indicate that. As is true with all use permits, they have to meet six conditions of approval in Article 51.4, and those relate to the health, safety, and well-being of the neighborhood. Project won't be detrimental to that. The property is adequately sized. I'm referring back to my notes. Adequately sized and in the proper location to accommodate the type of use proposed. That streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the use. Adequate public or private services to serve the property, and that includes police, fire, water, sewage disposal, and power. Number five, that the project conforms to the code, the general plan, and the applicable area plan, which in this case is the Lakeport area plan. And finally, that there are no violations of Chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26 on the property. Article 27, subsection A, is three additional requirements that have to be met. Proposed use complies with all development standards described in Section 1.1. We found that it did. Number two, that the applicant is qualified to make the application described. The applicant has passed live scan, so we felt they were qualified to make this application. And the application complies with qualifications for a permit described in Section 1.1II subI, and we found that it did meet all applicable ordinances, regulations, rules found within the various documents that we have to evaluate it for compliance with. Consequently, we're recommending that the planning commission adopt negative declaration, IS 19-27, for use permit number 19-15, with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 27, 2020. So that needs to be corrected. My apologies. That should be 2021, obviously. And likewise, with the motion for the major use permit, it's got the wrong year. And that we're recommending approval of major use permit number UP-19-15 for the property located at 2290 Soda Bay Road. And so with that, that concludes my presentation, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Eric. Do we have any questions from the commission?
I do not have any questions at this time.
No, Mr. Chair.
One thing I did want to add, I didn't do a water analysis in either of those two staff reports that we just evaluated. I can tell you that the wells on both properties are extremely stout, and the aquifer is extremely strong in these locations. And I have the well reports within the vast document pile here, if I need to unearth it for the planning commission. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I got an email this morning from Commissioner Williams asking if any of the three projects had had their state licenses. I have not been checking that prior to the planning commission hearing. My assumption is that they would not be able to get state licensing until they were approved at the county level. If I'm incorrect on that, and I'll be checking that before I bring anything back to the planning commission in the future, I'll confirm whether they have the state provisional, a state permanent license, which is unlikely, or what exactly the status of each applicant is with the state prior to coming before you in the future.
Thank you. I do appreciate that one. I did ask about this one, and it does have a state license now. Sir, we'll open it up to public comment in just a moment.
Any other comments, questions for Eric?
Not at this time.
Okay.
No comments. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. We can go ahead and open up for public comment in the chambers.
Mr. Chair, we do have someone who wishes to speak. Please be sure to state your first and last name, please.
This is Michael Wagner, here supporting Legendary Farms. The question for the state licensing, just to address that right away, we do have a state license. We've gone through the sequel clearinghouse and everything. So, you know, Lance was correct, where all the state needs to know is that these applicants are in process, and you can get your state license, which Legendary Farms has already done. I have copies of all of that, if that's necessary to provide. The question of the flood plain, just to address it before it becomes an issue, the property directly behind us is an AE flood zone, which means basically it can flood more often or more likely because of its location closer to the lake. The Perez Rancho de la Fuente, 95% of that property is all AO, which puts it in a 100-year flood zone. So once every 100 years, it could flood. So I think there is a little bit of a difference where, you know, pots and the different things that would be done in that AE is because the flood plain is substantially different in zoning. And if you need hard copies of that, or if you want me to pull it up on GIS, I'd be happy to provide that. The rest of it, the state water board has been out there for inspection, which was actually done, I think, in 2019, and they've been keeping up on that ever since. Also been approved by California Fishing Game, and then obviously back to CDFA with their state license. So I think that covers most of the issues that would come up. And if there's anything that you have a question about or would like further documentation, please let me know. I'd be happy to assist.
Thank you.
Sir, is it pots or in-ground planting?
It's in pots. It's in pots, yep.
Yeah, now that's consistent with the staff report. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers?
Yes, I do believe we have the applicant or the, yes, I don't know.
The owner.
The owner. Please be sure to state your first and last name.
This will be the last time I speak.
One more time, though, first and last name.
Now I'm speaking, oh, my name is Frank Perez.
Thank you.
Owner of Rancho de la Fuente. And I just want to, I'm very particular about my property. And if anybody's driven by there or done any site inspections, we keep it very clean. And if anybody's driven by there or have done any site inspections, we keep it very clean and we protect the environment. And Legendary Farm has been spot-on. They're very good tenants. I have no complaints whatsoever. I'm very, very happy to have them there. And I thank you guys for considering this, and I ask you kindly to please go ahead and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no one else who wishes to speak in chambers. I'm not sure about the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody in the Zoom room, Jake?
Nope, there are currently no raised hands in the Zoom room.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission. Are any follow-up questions or action?
I have no further comments. If anyone on the commission has anything else to say, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move, excuse me, I move that the Planning Commission find that the initial study IS nineteen dash twenty-seven applied for by Legendary Farms on property located at twenty-two ninety Sota Bay Road, Lakeport, and further described as APN zero-zero-eight dash zero-one-zero dash two-nine will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed on the staff report dated May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty.
Twenty-one.
Excuse me, two thousand and twenty-one.
Sorry.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner House?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the use permit UP one-nine dash one-five applied for by Legendary Farms on property located at twenty-two ninety Sota Bay Road, Lakeport, and further described as APN zero-zero-eight dash zero-one-zero dash two-nine does meet the requirements of section fifty-one point four of the Lake County zoning ordinance and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner House?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I'd like to note that the applicant or any issued person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. There's a disagreement with the Planning Commission. Appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. Appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to five P M on or before the seventh calendar day upon the commission's final termination. We will take up our nine thirty-five item, Public Hearing, consider major use permit UP twenty dash zero-one to consider approval of commercial cannabis cultivation project on a twenty-plus acre property in consideration of adopting and mitigating negative declaration IS twenty dash zero-one. Applicant owner is Stellar Green Farms LLC. Proposed project, one A-type three medium outdoor cannabis cultivation licenses requesting forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty square feet of cannabis canopy area and one A-type thirteen self-distribution license. Location five-eight-zero-eight Highland Springs Road, Lakeport, California, APN zero-zero-eight dash zero-four-four dash two-four. Environmental evaluation mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Porter again, Lake County Associate Planner. Applicant made this application in early two thousand and twenty for a one A-type three medium outdoor license as well as an A-type thirteen self-distribution license. Property is actually in another mapped high-value farmland area. And so similarly to the last two applications, they would need to transition from outdoor to greenhouse. I've discussed this electronically with the applicant. They're amenable to making that conversion. I have had several complaints from neighbors regarding the eight-foot-tall screening fence that was not well-maintained during the non-growing seasons. And so I think that, I don't remember if I modified any conditions regarding screening. I typically do. But this is a particular concern to the neighbors, and so I wanted to identify that as being a potential issue. The conversion verbiage is in the conditions of approval going from outdoor to greenhouse within two years. And that is under condition number A nineteen. Regarding the condition of the property, condition number B two requires screening around the property because of the proximity to other established ag uses that are less than five hundred feet away. And ordinance number thirty-one oh-three, I believe, is the operative ordinance that requires certain screening to occur if the separation is less than five hundred feet. Getting back to this permit, there was, like I said, some opposition to it. It mainly had to do with people that were on neighboring lots that had established ag uses. They felt that there was a compatibility issue. We, however, felt that because cannabis is allowed in the APZ zone, because it's in a mapped high-value farmland area, and because of ordinance thirty-one oh-three, that if they were allowed to transition into greenhouses, that the use would not be incompatible with the proviso that they meet certain conditions that are in the attached conditions of approval. So as is the case with any other use permits, they have to meet certain approval criteria within chapter fifty-one point four that the project won't have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. Number two, that it's adequately sized and shaped to accommodate the use. Number three, that streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to accommodate the use. Number four, they're adequate public or private services to serve the property. Number five, it's in conformance with the applicable provisions and policies of the code, general plan, in this case ordinance thirty-one oh-three, and the area plan, which I believe is the Lakeport area plan at this location. Also, it has to be in compliance with Article twenty-seven subsection AT. The use complies with all development standards. We found that it did with the conditions added. Applicant is qualified to make the application. There are two applicants that are co-applicants, both of which have passed live scan. So we found that was met and that finally, the application complies with qualifications for a permit described in section one dash II sub I. And as was the case with the prior two, we evaluated this license with the general plan, with the area plan, with the adopting ordinance that was recently adopted, thirty-one oh-three, with chapter twenty-seven subsection AT, with Article fifty-one point four, and with the zoning requirements for the APZ zone. And we found that it could be made to comply with appropriate conditions of approval added. Therefore, we're recommending that the mitigated negative declaration be adopted and that the major use permit UP twenty dash oh-one be approved with the conditions of approval that are attached. And that concludes my presentation. I did get some green sheets. I don't know if the Planning Commission has seen them. There were a number of commentators that came in at the last moment. I'm going to distribute them. These are primarily in opposition to it. There was a petition that's been signed by a number of people. I have not read these. They came in too late, and so I can't speak to any of the individual issues.
Thank you, Eric. Do you have any comments or questions from the commission? Want a few minutes to read over the green sheets?
Yeah, we'll take a quick look.
Whenever you're ready, if you have any questions for Eric, comments, feel free.
Eric, you did say that this does have a water board license. I was looking at the page here where they were asking some questions if it did not need a water board. It does have a water board, correct?
It has to. Yeah, we checked that when they first make application.
I just wanted to confirm that, just to say that, because that was something that was written in this pamphlet, the green sheets you've given us. So that would negate the number six concerns of stormwater because they're in the water board itself. So I just kind of wanted to go through that.
Yeah, that's one of the precursors to us accepting any application is NOA from the water board.
And I myself, I'm just, I'm looking at some of the concerns. This is in the farmland protection zone, and that was a large discussion, and it looks like that's been resolved. So in other words, they are going to transition. And so I think that some of these things are now being mitigated. I don't know if the people were truly aware of that. I would ask that there has to be something, obviously, and you brought this up, Eric, in terms of conditions about that fence. I have seen, you know, I mean, people leave for two or three weeks and storms come in and it will rip up those fences. But obviously, that site is not something anyone in the community wants to see. So the terpenes that was brought up in this, again, that's being mitigated, again, I think, with the greenhouses, so don't see any issues there. So far, I'm not, I can't attest to number four about the three different types of cannabis grows on Rodello Road. So, but again, right now, I'm still, I'm not seeing anything in here as of yet. Obviously, we're going to hear some public comment. I'm looking at how many are in this printed petition here, how many are in Highland Springs and how many on Rodello. It is nice to see that, the first page there, again, they were all on those roads. There's only one that is not. So I'm sure we're going to get some comments then. It's not like it's out of the area.
I just confirmed the notice of applicability. It's on the file. It stated thirteen December two thousand and nineteen.
And Commissioner Williams, you addressed the screening and the smell, which is two issues I was going to mention. Yeah, the photographs of the screening obviously aren't pretty, and that has to, that, of course, is something that you can address as the applicants. And then there seemed to be concern about the presence of a security guard. And I would just ask you when you speak to address that as well. Thank you. I mean, security comes with an approved cannabis grow, so I don't necessarily object to the presence of a security guard.
Do we have any further questions for Eric?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's open up for public comment, or if the applicant's available.
They are here in chambers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jake, is there any public comment in the Zoom room?
At this time, we have no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. My name is Christina Torres. This is Michael Rodriguez for the record.
If you want to take your mask off, it might help.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, of course.
We are very happy to be here and we appreciate your time and consideration. Eric, thank you very much for all of your hard work. We've been working together for a while now. Thank you. And to address the concerns of the community, please understand that we are good acting citizens. I apologize. I do know that storms come in and that fabric, it was, you know, the wind just tears it up, so I do apologize for those photos. Please be aware that if you drive by now, you can see that the fencing has been completely replaced with a more durable fabric that will not disintegrate as quickly as the other ones. We have pictures that we're happy to present to you, and you're welcome to drive by and see that the fencing has been replaced and repaired and mitigated. Thank you. As far as the water board, thank you, Eric, for presenting the date of our NOA. Everything has been approved. We also do have our state provisional license, so everything that encompasses everything has been approved on the state level. As far as a security guard on the premises, we as law-abiding citizens and cannabis cultivators are completely aware of that there's no firearms ever allowed on property. We actually didn't have a security guard.
We were the ones that would walk around and, you know, do our little normal routine.
Just a flashlight.
I'm not sure if anybody mistook that as a security guard. But no, definitely not. A security guard, no hired security guard. It was us that, we are the two.
We are the two caregivers. We give our heart and our soul and everything, and we are happy to be compliant and work with the county and our community.
And we do apologize about the fence. It was a storm and it was a bad choice of material that we bought to begin with. We have replaced it months ago and has been replaced. Those pictures probably were right after, during the winter time. And of course, they caught it wrong about maybe before we got to replace about four, you know, good
Their entire
Thousands of feet of fencing. And we reinforced the fence as well. You know, knowing that we're going to go into this, we did reinforce it and, you know, we're going to have to obviously change it going into the transition, the greenhouses. And we will be, we will be doing that as well. Other than that, I'm not sure what other comments were in there that we could answer.
We're happy to.
Sir, did you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry. My name is Michael Rodriguez.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time. I'd like to hear, we have some signatures. I'd like to hear some of the neighbor concerns, I think, if they are on Zoom. And then maybe come back and give you a chance to respond to them if there are any other things that do come up. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jake, anybody via Zoom want to comment?
No, so I still only, I still don't have any hands raised. If you would like to make a comment, you could click, raise hand on the bottom of your Zoom window. Or if you dial it on via phone, you could dial start.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion so carried.
I'd like to note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. There's a disagreement with the planning commission. Appeal of the board of supervisors may be filed. Appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m., on and before the seventh calendar day, following the commission's final determination.
Do we have any untimed staff updates or office news?
I don't have too much. What?
Okay.
Nope. I, yeah, I always, I start, I always say that, I don't have a whole lot, and then I think of a bunch of stuff. No, I don't, I don't really have any additional announcements. Staff, staff is doing amazing work in extremely difficult and challenging conditions. Like to thank all the planners who made presentations today, and they're just, they're, they're unsung heroes. I don't think people really understand and appreciate the pressure that they're under, and they're, they're, they're doing very good work. So we're going to continue to do that and try to get these projects out. It's, it's, it's nice to fill your, your agenda, and we'll just continue to try to improve our, our reports and, and get these projects out.
And then I had a couple of questions. I don't know if the chair would let me speak for staff.
Please do.
Thank you. I just had to ask, is there any possibility of adding, what are the thoughts about adding any planning commission meetings, like special meetings, maybe for next month? I know there seems to be a lot of people that are waiting, aren't getting early-activated, and so they're waiting for their planning commission meetings. And as farmers, that can be a little bit difficult, so I wanted to kind of put out there, is there a possible, doing, possibility of doing any special meetings there? And that might also curtail into how many early activations do we currently have, and how are the initial studies currently going? So this is kind of thoughts to staff and to our commission.
Did you, I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you ask, did you say that there are people waiting for early activation permits? And that would be the reason for the extra meetings?
Well, right now, I've, I've gotten emails and calls stating that a lot of folks, it's hard to do both, I've been told. In other words, you can make a choice between early activation or your UP hearing. It sounds like we have a backlog. And so that is one thing. I know that some folks have said that they don't want to do the early activation, they're waiting for their UP. But then, are they going to be able to plant if that is the case? So some people are kind of waiting for, you know, a time zone to be added in here. So I'm wondering, should we increase our load in this? Because we're also getting close to the tax time as well. So in other words, the first tax regiment is going to be hitting. But, you know, I'm kind of curious, how many early activations are out there? If there's five, 10, 20, 30, 40? And what is that looking like last year? And then, and then really kind of saying, should we try to take in a few next month and the month after to try to compensate for this? And this is just stuff I was made aware of, and I thought that, you know, maybe this should be brought up and then thought about, because I don't know how many early activations we're at. I don't know if that would help if we did more planning meetings. I want to make sure that the community development is done here, and I think there are a lot of people that are waiting. So I just want to kind of, you know, bring this up so everyone can think about it, talk about it, get some numbers. Thank you.
Just to follow up, thanks for your comment. And is it, is it just a question of adding more items to our existing agendas as opposed to, because I know there's certain issues with having security in the building and costs and staff available when we add on special meetings. And I'm not, I could be wrong, but do the supervisors have to approve a request for a special meeting?
No, your, your, your commissions had, had special, well, they, your commission's done special meetings for us, where, where we, we had a number of projects that had time, time constraints, and, and, and we've scheduled special meetings in the past without board approval. So I, I'm going to presume that was okay. Nobody, nobody, I don't think I got in any trouble for that. So, so Commissioner Williams, what we'll do is go and take a look at the, the applications that are pending, the, the use permit, applications that are, are close, ones that, you know, there's, there's advertising and notice requirements. And so, you know, even to squeeze in an extra meeting in June, you know, we're running up against the deadline for having, having those, 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 those projects complete and, and being ready to publicly notice. So, but we'll take a look at those, and if there's an opportunity to do that, we'll, typically, the way we handle that is we reach out to, to you and ask if, you know, inquire your, into your availability on a particular date. And if we have a quorum, then we'll, we'll go ahead and add an extra meeting. Or additionally, if we can add more, more items to current agendas, then, then we can take a look at that as well. But we'll, we'll definitely look and see if there's an availability. And if there's, we can put, put several projects together and get them on an, an extra meeting, we'll certainly do that.
Well, I really appreciate that. And again, I didn't, you know, being new to this, I did not know how that worked. And I really just wanted to make sure, I would definitely put out there right now, I'd be willing to do extra meetings, or again, longer ones. We did end at 12, and we did have a schedule, but also what came to the forefront, if we, if we postponed two, that could be two spots or slots that someone else who might have been told, oh, I think we can get you in at this particular date. I, I just, you know, just want to kind of be proactive in that. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please do.
For the planning commission bylaws, under the planning commission bylaws, Article 3, the meeting section, Section 5, it addresses special meetings, and it reads as follows. "Special meetings may be called by the chair whenever he or she deems such meetings expedient, and shall be so called whenever two commissioners shall request the same of the chair, and the chair concurs with their request. No business, except those items listed as business to be transacted on the special notice, shall be considered." And that just pertains to the Brown Act as far as, and notice requirements are shorter for special meetings, and therefore, discussion items are restricted severely for what's specifically noticed. I'm still unclear as to what would be addressed aside from other use permits. Commissioner Williams, you brought up early activation permits. To my understanding, early activation permits have not been brought before your commission for consideration thus far.
Yes, so.
Are you requesting that they be so?
No, not at all, not at all. No, I'm suggesting that a lot of folks that are in this process, waiting for their hearing, have been told, you, we will not give you early activation, you will have to wait for your, your use permit. And I don't think, a few years ago, we had 150-plus applications for cannabis. And so if, I can't visually see if there is a backlog. And if there is a backlog, and there are people waiting to plant, just, just look at them as farmers, that I would want to make sure that if we could get them at least, you know, heard, that would be one option. So that's what I was looking at. So in other words, not looking at early activation at all.
And just to kind of echo what Commissioner Williams has said, if there is a backlog, and if this is a way that, you know, us as a commission can alleviate a little bit of that stress for, for CDD, for the applicants, for, for everybody, I, I, I see where you're coming from. And if it's an extra day, if it's a longer day, as long as you give me a lunch break, I will be happy to do it. But other than that, I mean, we're, we're here to help the community and to, and to contribute our time. So thank you for mentioning that.
And I guess I had mentioned one other thing, that I had sent an email off to Eric just to make sure that we had state licenses. And I think that myself, I didn't really want to see anything in here unless it had been double-checked whether that is with code enforcement. It sounds like it's checked with code enforcement because we're seeing the articles, but I want to make sure that there isn't something that will come here, and then, I don't want to be in a position where I have to vote for something that obviously it says you have to have all state licenses, and something is in front of me where it never got a state license. And then we're in this boat that we seem to be in. So I just wanted to put that out there. I put it out there to Eric, but I put it out there to the six planners that, again, I would really like to see, you know, this double-checked beforehand. And it is difficult, I think, to check to make sure they do have everything, because we've been working on our, and that would be dealing with different departments, and that would be like the CDFAs. So that is all.
Okay, thank you. If there's not any further comments from Commissioner questions, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Eagle?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Eagle.